Good afternoon, colleagues. We're back from recess where we left off on Friday. We were on Bill number 165-37, COAR, in the second reading. Senator Taitegui had the floor and was about to make an amendment. We see that there are amendments passed out. Senator Taitegui, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good afternoon to my colleagues. Madam Speaker, the first amendment I'd like to proffer would be on page 6-7, line 25. Madam Speaker, when we were discussing the bill, Bill 165-37, we were talking about individuals who take every effort to save money, or some who can't even afford it, find ways to cut costs but still be responsible individuals of the community by taking their trash to the transfer station. Sometimes families who, individuals who have families, like their parents or the manumku or that generate very, very little trash, that too as well is, you know, handled by a family member to pick up one bag maybe once a week from that individual. I don't think, Madam Speaker, it would be right to not allow these individuals to continue to utilize the transfer stations. So that's what my amendment does. It gives that exemption for those individuals. This is on line 25, where it says, "If the owner or leasing of a residential building registered with GSWA is a self hauler and utilizes residential transfer station," and then it goes on further, "any owner who meets the requirements of this section may petition the GSWA for an exemption." And it's underlying, "The exemption eligibility shall be renewed annually from the date the initial exemption is granted." The reason why we put that additional "annually" in there is to continue to monitor those individuals who are using the transfer station. And it's easily monitored because when they go there, their license plate is taken down, a receipt is given to them, so everything is documented. And it's just one way of keeping an eye on things, those using the transfer stations. So other than that, Madam Speaker, I ask my colleagues to support this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, Senator Paris, you are recognized.
Sidoz Masi, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of this amendment as a co-sponsor. So this is something that Guam Solid Waste actually supports, and they sent a letter with this, some of the language in this. I think this is really critical because if we're trying to, you know, help those that are financially in need, this is an opportunity for a discounted rate. So, you know, despite that, the rates will increase, you know, the amount that one would pay, the lowest amount would be, I believe, $11, $11 to drop off your waste at a residential transfer station. And, you know, we all want to support and promote responsible disposal of trash, and Guam Solid Waste is tasked with that responsibility to ensure the waste is disposed of properly. And I think this is an important exemption, especially, I know, even the board member, Peggy Denny, she was a big proponent of this, of using the transfer station. And so we need to support those individuals that are doing this and continue to support them to dispose of their waste responsibly and at a low cost. Sidoz Masi.
Sidoz Masi, Senator Paris. On the amendment, is there anyone, Senator Barnett, you're recognized on the amendment?
Sidoz Masi, Madam Speaker, and good afternoon to the people of Guam. Thank you for watching. I too rise in support of the amendment. And in fact, as a co-sponsor of the bill, this is one of the concerns that I had addressed when we were in session Friday, because I think that when we talk about this conversation of people putting trash where it needs to go, that we should definitely accommodate the people who are already doing that, whether they're subscribers of the Solid Waste Service or whether, like I had mentioned on Friday, they kind of, you know, put the trash together and split that eight bucks to be able to dump at the transfer station. So I rise in support of this amendment and also, of course, obviously, of the bill itself because I think that, I know that a previous speaker had talked about on Friday, the impact to low-income households. And I know that for many on Section 8, it's a sliding scale. Many people on Section 8 get the trash services completely subsidized, and then the more you make, obviously, the less that cost is covered. But election year or not, this is the solution that will address illegal dumping. And I asked my colleagues to support this measure and also this amendment, which again, I think was the only concern that I really had with the bill, because I am one of these people who, you know, party got a truck and we dump in the truck and we're going out to the transfer station, you know, once a week, maybe once every couple of weeks. And it's that kind of stewardship that I think we should be promoting when it comes to our environment and our island. So support the bill all the way, gun it, and support the amendment as well, Madam Speaker. Sidoz Masi.
Sidoz Masi, Senator. On the amendment, anyone else who would like to speak on the amendment? If not, then Senator Fisher, on the amendment.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. It's really just a question to the author. Could you speak to us about the enforcement mechanism for this? In other words, if I go to the transfer station in Malolo, but I decide to use the transfer station in Aggett, how will Aggett know that I have an exemption? Well, I would just like to hear about ideas for enforcement. Thank you.
Would the author of the amendment yield?
There is no enforcement in this section that, where I'm making the amendment, Madam Speaker, that is further on in the bill, but I hear that the author of the legislation is making an amendment later on in the bill to talk about. But I would like the author of the bill, because this is the amendment that has not the enforcement. I'm not making any changes to enforcement, I'm just making a change for an exemption to including exemption. And I'd ask the author of the bill itself to yield if she would like to.
Thank you, Senator Taitegui. With this.
Yeah, I was gonna do a point of information. So in speaking with the general manager, they actually keep track of license plates of the users of the transfer stations. So this is how they keep track of how it's used and how much it's utilized. So in regards to tracking and making sure that these are the registered self haulers, that is one way I see happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Fisher, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam Speaker, thank you for the answer. Nothing further.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, is there anyone else who would like to speak on the amendment? If not, then sponsor may close on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, you know, I've had reservations on this legislation, and I just wanted to make sure there are certain things in there, if the bill should pass, that there are some areas of great concerns being addressed. And it was mentioned earlier, when I was speaking on the bill, on the amendment, how those individuals who continue to use a transfer station will be able to do so. And as I mentioned too, that they are monitored through their license plate. Again, the author of the legislation mentioned that again. So this is just a safety mechanism, Madam Speaker, for the bill to ensure that those people and those who are listening, who use a transfer station, that you would still be able to do it, you would be exempt, exemption. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, is there any objection?
Objection.
There's an objection on the exemption amendment. All in favor, please raise your hand. Yes, Senator Taitegui, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have another amendment, and this amendment is on page 8, line 11. And this just goes through the bill to ensure that, you know, the promulgation of rules and regulations, as it goes through the AAA process, that it does not default after a certain amount of days that once the rules and regulations are given to the legislature to act upon, that if it's not acted upon, normally, it automatically becomes law. And I don't think that something as important as this bill would, we should just let it lapse into law. No, I think the legislature needs to look at those rules and regulations and ensure that the intention is met, to ensure it's not a hardship on our community, and it should not automatically become law if we don't address it. And I've seen it happen in the past, where rules and regulations were brought to the legislature and it was never addressed and automatically became law. Unlike my last amendment, where it allowed individuals using the transfer station, where we had a senator who objected to something like that, that's gonna put a lot of hardship on our people. So maybe with this amendment, if the, if the, those who are creating the rules and regulations bring it to the legislature, and maybe they might incorporate allowing those who wish to use the transfer station to continue to use it, and it could be in the rules and regulations, they can incorporate the waiver in there. So this one, though, we want to make sure that it does not lapse into law, that this body must overlook these rules and regulations. So that, Madam Speaker, is my amendment. And whether you support this or not, I mean, it's obvious that some people already here is gonna vote no on the bill and don't want any of these amendments to go through, to make it even difficult. But this is my safety measure, the last amendment and this amendment is safety measures, just in case the bill is passed, that is put into law. And that's one of these amendments. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, is there anyone who would like to speak on the amendment? Senator Paris, you're recognized on the Senator Taitegui amendment to line 11, page 8.
Sidoz Masi, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of this amendment. I think, you know, as a sponsor and co-sponsor of this amendment, we've all been advocating for transparency, and, you know, really, it's important to have that extra step to take a look at these regulations as it gets developed. And also, especially, our body is always very keen to look for the finer details in ensuring that, you know, any questions or concerns can be addressed at this step. So I thank the sponsor for this amendment, Sidoz Masi.
Sidoz Masi, Senator Paris. On the amendment, is there anyone else on the amendment? If not, then the sponsor may close on the amendment. She waves closing. So is there any objection to this amendment? Seeing no, who's objecting? There's an objection. All in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. Amendment fails. Vice Speaker. I still have the floor. Vice Speaker, yes. Senator Taitegui, you're recognized on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like the reconsideration of the First Amendment from this body for On the First Amendment, to allow individuals currently using the transfer station or wish to use a transfer station to be allowed to use it. So I would like a, consider to reconsider. That was objected by Senator Siniklis. It was a measure to allow those individuals currently using the transfer station to continue to use it, that they're exempt from being forced to having trash being picked up at their home. And I ask that this body to reconsider that amendment, that First Amendment.
Colleagues, there is a motion to reconsider a failed amendment that was proffered by Senator Taitegui, which is on pages 6 and 7, line 25. Is that the right one? Senator Taitegui, is that the?
Yes, it is on pages 6 and 5, and it's to allow those individuals currently using transfer stations to continue to use it, and they be exempt. It is on page 6 and 7, line 25.
There has been a motion to reconsider, a motion to reconsider the failed item. Would you like to speak on that? Please do. Speaker Terla, you're recognized.
Sidoz Masi, and thank you to the proffer of the reconsideration motion. I support reconsideration of that because I'm actually stunned that that would fail, because the only objection to universal trash should be cost. But what GSWA has done in its letter to us of April 19, 2024, has spelled out for us in detail an exemption that they would like to see us pass that would continue to allow those people who do not subscribe to regular trash service to avail of going to the transfer stations and bringing their trash. And that, for them, is cheaper to do that themselves than to pay the regular monthly So GSWA has found a way to do that, and they told us if we amended it exactly as the author of the amendment stated, to add a new E, and says, "If the owner of a residence registers with GSWA as a self hauler and utilizes the residential transfer stations," that they, GSWA, would not require them to subscribe to regular monthly trash service. This is what people wanted when they testified. This was their only objection. Why not allow them to continue to use the transfer stations instead of mandating them to regular monthly pickup service? This, and GSWA has a way to track them. They are going to be permitted, first of all, and, second of all, so they would have to do the paperwork, and, second of all, they were going to have license plates that are going to be tracked at whatever transfer station they go to. So I see GSWA going out of their way to make this as convenient for the people of Guam as possible, to not burden any of those who are currently using transfer stations and not to further burden those who are signed up for regular trash by increasing their costs. And they have told us very clearly, they will, they are mandated. They must follow the mandates given to them by the receivership, by the district court, by the US EPA. There's no way around that. They have to comply. And in order to comply, they've told us they will raise all of our residential trash pickup service rates unless we give them an alternative such as this bill. And in this bill, if this bill passes, they put a, they put a announcement in today's paper, they will reduce regular residential customer rates. Reduce? How rare is that? It's very rare. They found a way to reduce rates if we pass this bill. We found a way to subsidize rates for those who can't afford it, and we found a way to keep, GSWA found a way to keep those transfer station users able to use it for cheaper than monthly subscriptions. So I'm in full support of this amendment, and I think we need it. If you want to continue with status quo, this is the closest we can get, is allow them then to continue with the transfer stations, and they don't not have to sign up. But we might not have that luxury when all the costs come down for mandates that we are not addressing if we cannot pass this amendment and pass the bill. Sidoz Masi.
Thank you, Speaker Therese. Senator Fisher, on the reconsideration.
Yes, ma'am.
You may proceed.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I was looking for some clarification. We are now debating the motion to reconsider, correct?
Yes, sir. Just a motion to reconsider, and I allowed, I allowed the body to speak.
Okay.
On the motion to reconsider.
On reconsideration.
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Senator Siniklis, you are recognized at this time.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and good afternoon to everybody. We get so tricky here every once in a while, and this is just a tricky amendment because it's trying to push a measure to try to get everybody into a subscription that I think is not, it's not fair. It's unjust. Here we are thinking, oh, okay, great, we're gonna, we're gonna do this, we're gonna reduce prices and all that stuff. You know, with the track record that we've seen lately and everything going up, you prom, you think, you think for a moment that...
Point of order, this...
We're talking about the...
Senator Siniklis, at this time, I would acknowledge Senator Paris on the point of order. Please state your point of order.
So is the...
We are still under motion to reconsider the actions of the body.
So reconsider basically the amendment?
Actions of the body on the amendment as proffered by Senator Taitegui.
So shouldn't this debate happen when they, we talk about, after reconsidering, after the vote for reconsideration versus it being spoken of now?
We are at a crossroads. I will ask the legal...
Madam, may I continue? Madam Speaker?
On the motion for reconsideration, I was advised by counsel. It is, I apologize, it is not a debatable motion. On the motion to reconsider, there was an objection. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. To reconsider the actions of the body. Motion fails. I do apologize. Anyone else wishing to speak on the motion? Anyone else wishing to speak on the main motion? On the main motion? On the main motion, if there's no one else wishing to speak, Senator Perez, you have the floor to close. I understand you have several amendments. You may do so right at this time. Sign them out.
Oh, wait. Sorry. Did you want to speak on the motion?
I do apologize. I did ask everybody if they wanted to speak. I apologize, Senator Perez. Speaker Terla, I will give you the floor at this time to speak on the main motion.
Sidoz Masi, Madam Speaker. Thank you, and sorry for the confusion.
No worries. Please proceed.
But I'd like to speak on this bill, and I rise in support of this bill. And I'm gonna begin with November 2021. It might have been earlier than that, it might have been in gubernatorial platforms for, but I didn't have time to research all of that. But I know for sure that in November 2021, the governor and lieutenant governor called for universal trash collection under their investment para hamzu program as the means to end illegal dumping on Guam, which is by far one of the leading concerns for residents of Guam then and now. And it, and these residents, I'm sorry, I can't hear.
You may proceed.
And these, and the residents of Guam continue to suffer from health hazards of illegal dumping. Even today, I got an earful about all the illegal dumping next to one person's house, another person's house. It's a huge concern of the people of Guam, and it's a blemish on the beauty of Guam to our visitors and our residents who deserve better. So the gov, the governor announced that they were working on calculations as to the capital investment, how much in subsidy they would dedicate to ensuring that we have universal trash collection. And the governor said, and I quote, "We are going to have trash collection for everybody, and it's not just those that are registered and can pay. We are going to roll that out. It's just a matter now of how much it means, and of course, our focus is going to be on, how much amount of subsidy can we do to minimize the cost of the trash collection? One of the reasons we're pretty persistent on this universal trash collection is we feel this is a way to deter and eliminate illegal dumping," unquote. I'm sorry, Madam Speaker, it's very distracting, I'm trying to concentrate, but I'll continue.
Senators, please. Speaker, you may proceed.
Thank you. The chairman of the Guam Solid Waste Authority, GSWA, who is Andrew Gale, said in September 2023, and I'm getting all of these from the newspapers, that they provided language to Senator Perez, that GSWA had been working on with the governor's office and that the governor's chief of staff did not have a problem with the bill proposed by Senator Perez in turn. And this bill, I believe, and I think it's clear, it is, the bill by Senator Perez is a real solution and one of the only solutions proposed to a problem that will not go away by wishful thinking or regular politics and despite the impending election that many of my colleagues are so afraid of. And this, this problem demands action now. And I applaud the author for her courage in the face of being told straight out by some in here that they can't support it because of the election coming up. But it doesn't make sense to me, Madam Speaker, because would those senators prefer the increase in rates on existing customers that GSWA will be forced to... increase in rates on existing customers that GSWA will be forced to adopt if we do not pass this bill? And I'm not speculating, because they made the effort to put out an ad in today's paper because they testified, and maybe they thought we couldn't hear them. So they put an ad in the paper today that says, "Public notice, scenario one is contingent upon the passage of Bill 165." And that's where you see a decrease in residential customers' fees. And scenario two outlines rates in the event of the non-passage of Bill 165, and that is where you see the increase. And this was published by their general manager. This is in today's paper. So I don't know, but if I was the one worried about an election, I wouldn't be stopping GSWA from decreasing residential customers' rates. I would, I would help them. When they've asked us, we can take care of the residential customers by reducing their rates. We can take care of the transfer station customers by allowing them to continue and not mandating them to sign up for residential rates. And we can take care of those in Gura, we can take care of those in SNAP. They have found ways. We're gonna take care of those who can't afford it, and we're gonna decrease rates for those customers who have been doing their duty all along. The Guam Solid Waste Authority came into existence because of the government of Guam being put under receivership for its handling of trash. The Guam Solid Waste is under mandate by the District Court of Guam up to today as to how it's going to handle trash, just like the Guam Water Works is under mandate of how it's going to handle wastewater on Guam. And with these mandates are tremendous costs. The luxury of tree fresh, free trash disposal was long, was over long ago for the residents of Guam because of the receivership. And this is something that all of those who argue for receivership of any of our entities should remember, that this is the most costly option to resolve issues because not only did the receiver force us to pay the employees who we were already paying and to pick up the trash that we were already picking up, but also to immediately hire new employees, pay for new equipment, new facilities, upgrade everything that we had, millions of dollars worth of state-of-the-art LaZon sales, mandated that the government condemn land for a new landfill, millions of dollars, pay the millions it costs to close the oat dump. We're still on the hook for that. And on top of all these costs, pay a receiver to tell us what to do. So though I support free trash as everyone else does, and I would love to do that, this is simply not a reality for any of today's modern utilities. Today, although we would like to go back to the days of no monthly septic tank, uh, charges, just use septic tanks, so no monthly sewer charges, we're unable to do that. When a sewer is available, we are mandated to hook up to the sewer despite the additional cost. And that is because it is based on a U.S. environmental and clean water policy that Guam is bound to. And similarly, the costs of trash are being subsidized hugely with this bill, without this bill, since forever and probably forever subsidized hugely by the taxpayers of Guam already and on the backs of existing rate payers and transfer fee, transfer fee payers in order to prevent contamination of our rivers, oceans, and our drinking water. And the court continues to set mandates for GSWA and our future course of action as a government in regards to solid waste. And this will not become any cheaper for all taxpayers regardless of our wishes and dreams to go back to no-cost trash collection for a few. We have passed, not us, those before us were faced with no money and a receivership and court orders, and they had to pass bonds to get this work done today. In the 35th, not even too long ago, we had to pass an authority for a bond to pay for We are paying, either in front or in back, we are paying. The taxpayers are paying. Those who have signed up are paying. Those who are taking to the transfer stations are paying. I don't think they should pay more. And this bill helps to minimize increases. With this bill, GSWA will be able to move from what began as a court-set solid waste fees calculated by the receiver and reduce those for all existing residential customers. That's what they have announced, that's what they have sworn, that's what the PUC testified that they will support if this bill is passed. And it will, this bill will allow exemptions for those who haul their own trash to a transfer station. It will allow for reduced rates for those who are in need of SNAP programs in Gura. It is designed to increase the number of users to the system to expand GSWA's ability to provide the necessary mandated service without increasing fees to the residential pickup customers. And G does, GSWA has made it very clear that the alternative to this bill is an increase in fees and that there is no other way around that. They've published in the newspaper today, as I showed you. And Guam EPA has also said, according to their study of the trash, that they are finding, uh, that, they studied the illegally dumped trash, that this bill will reduce illegal dumping. That's what they said in their testimony, contrary to some of what has been said on the floor. And the floor amendments that were proposed, they would have recognized GSWA's exemption for transfer station customers. And I'm hoping that the amendments that the sponsor has passed out, that when she proffers them, that they will remove the garnishment provision, the implementation date, put it one year after, the rules and regs are promulgated. This would make trash collection very similar to, if you build a house, you have to have sewer. And if you hook up to water, they assume you're going to have sewer. Island sustainability, we just went through a beautiful, huge conference. But I don't believe that island sustainability is a PR mission. It is a put your money and your hands where your mouth is and do the actual work of getting the trash from illegal dump sites into our multi-million dollar taxpayer-built landfill and get the recyclables into the hands of those that can recycle them. And so for all these reasons, I stand in support of this bill, and I really urge that my colleagues consider their obstinance against this when there is no other solution before us except for more taxpayer dollars to go around and pick up the trash that is illegally dumped. The agencies have said in their expertise that this is one way. The governor and the lieutenant governor have both said, "This is the way." And we're not gonna get a better deal than this, I don't think. And I'm curious, because when the governor announced she was calculating the cost of the capital investment, she thought she was going to have to put in a lot of money in order to get this done. And the Investment Parahamzu program, I think, was her spending plan for the federal funds. And in fact, if you look at the ARP expenditure reports that we have received here at the legislature, you will see that there is a category there for universal trash collection that they have already spent 2 point some million dollars on, and I don't exactly know what that program is. And I hope it went to something very good. But I'm saying, we've already, I, I, I'm not attesting to what they've spent that money on, but that's what it's labeled, universal tax, universal tax, I'm sorry, universal solid waste collection, not tax, universal solid waste or trash collection. It's itemized there, 2 point some million dollars. This is a, this, I want to commend Guam Solid Waste Authority. I think they've gone out of their way to show us that they are hearing the customers. They are hearing those who don't want to be mandated to be put on the monthly system, and they found a way to do that. I don't see how we're gonna get a better deal than this unless we've got another pot of federal funds, or the governor's going to spend her federal funds on this. And just put bins out there for everyone and pay our federal funds for that? The federal funds that we've set aside for a hospital, the federal funds, maybe she's gonna take the federal funds that we sent over to Rev and Tax to pay for another new tax assessment. I do not want to see an increase in taxes. This is a way to decrease fees, and this is a way to curb illegal dumping. So I stand in full support of this bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Speaker. Senator Joanne Brown, on the main motion, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to speak on this bill. You know, I have mixed feelings about this bill, and I, I appreciate the desire, as we all do, to want to decrease illegal dumping on Guam. I would like to believe that the passage of this bill will accomplish that very desire. But I was at Guam EPA in the 1990s, Madam Speaker, when trash collection, so-called free trash collection, because ultimately, the governor of Guam paid for the collection on operations of the solid waste division through the Department of Public Works. And I was there for all the cleanups. It didn't eliminate illegal dumping. Unfortunately, of course, because of the limited revenue stream going in to address solid waste, we ended up with a situation of the Ordat dump burning on a regular basis, and certainly all our neighbors up there, and certainly some of my own relatives in the Darrell family, had to deal with regular fires at Ordot, at the dump, as we called it, because we couldn't call it a proper landfill. I mean, now with this bill, without the amendment that Senator Telo had put forth, if someone wanted to consolidate their trash, load it up on the truck, maybe take mom's trash and take it, haul it to a transfer station, we can't do that right now. And I would love to believe the, the, the promises of no rate increases. I was also there coming back at DPW, and we had to have those regular meetings before the federal court and before the federal judge to provide regular updates on the status of the construction of the new landfill, status of the collection, status of the equipment. It's the only time I've been in federal court, thank goodness. But I also noted recently, and I'm sure a lot of our other neighbors out there in the community, delay. And you know, Madam Speaker, we live on the same street. You know, they tell us, hey, take the trash out on Wednesday. I come home Wednesday night, the trash is still there. Okay, I'll leave it another day. Thodza, they didn't collect it. Friday, recycle day. Great, I got a lot of recycle. Come home Friday evening, it's still full. Okay, I'll wait Saturday, it's still full. Okay, I better haul it back up the driveway because, you know, it's kind of a little strange, my trash can's still out there. So there is a question of concern that I have as to wondering, are we operating any more efficiently now? And I understand the excessive cost of the receiver. I was on the compound. I was on the compound before they built the facility that's there, when they had the layout. And yes, the feds and their contractor got to charge an awful lot of money to build the new landfill, to build the transfer facilities. But in the short time that it's been returned to the government of Guam, I'm starting to notice those delays. I don't know if any of you are experiencing it. We certainly are. So I think the idea that the simple passage of this bill is going to be the cure-all solution and GW, the Guam Solid Waste Authority, GWSA, is not gonna come back and say, "People of Guam are gonna increase your rates." And people of Guam, all the illegal dumping that we see is going to disappear because the odds are fairly good, at least looking at past history, unless something's dramatically changed in human behavior. Because you have irresponsible people, unfortunately, that no matter what, continue to act irresponsibly. And that's the challenge that we're facing as a community. So I appreciate, you know, what's been presented, very nice of solid waste to put their ad in the paper, but I'm skeptical. I'm skeptical because it's just a question of observing delivery in terms of how services are being provided at this time. So I think those issues need to be addressed because, you know what, we should be able, when the, when the Solid Waste Authority was turned back to the government of Guam, effectively operate it. But what do we hear? We have a shortage of trucks. Then we have issues of repair with trucks. I mean, the list goes on. We've seen, you know, we've gone down that road before. And so why is that the case? Are they gonna come back and say, "We don't have the same revenue stream the receiver had, therefore, we can't address these things in a timely fashion"? At the end of the day, it's our people that, you know, experience the consequences of that. They experience the delays. And I'll tell you, I give the guys that work at Solid Waste a lot of credit because that is one tough job. And when they were on schedule, my goodness, they're there, it's not even 4:45 earlier in the morning, they're out there collecting the trash. And things worked on a clock, almost guaranteed, the schedule was consistent. So I don't know why that's the case. Maybe it's just a fluke for the last few months, and it's my imagination. It's possible. I just think we need to be mindful of that. And if we're not gonna allow individuals that are willing to collect their trash and consolidate it and bring it to the transfer station to drop it off, you know, still be a good citizen, but at least try to do things within their, within what they can afford, I think you're still gonna end up with problems with that, Madam Speaker. So I, I think they're the best of intentions here, but I'm, like I said, I'm just a little skeptical looking at what's happening now. And I, I'm almost assured, if we're gonna assume that this process is gonna eliminate illegal dumping, I haven't seen it yet. With that, Madam Speaker, thank you for the opportunity to comment on this bill.
You're very welcome, Senator Brown. I will ask the august body, anybody else here wishing to speak on the main motion? Anybody wanting to speak on the main motion? If not, I'm gonna ask Senator Perez to close on the bill. Senator Perez, I will recognize you on the main closing. You may proceed.
Ma'am, point of information.
Senator Dwayne Snickless, I will acknowledge your point of...
Yes, ma'am. So, you know, the author and I were just talking, and, you know, I really wanna, I really wanna find a balance here. And so she said that there, they could be a thought of like subsidizing trash in the future, if that's, if that's part of, she can answer to that, and how, how we can make this work.
I'm, I'm gonna call, Senator Snickless, I'm just gonna call for a moment's recess so that you can fir...[1735.32] so that you can fir... (knock on door) Yumina Chantashetinilis-Lutur in Guam is back from recess. Thank you, Senator Sniklas. Senator Perez, I'm going to acknowledge you at this time. Please proceed.
To do as Massey, Madam Speaker, for that recess. And after speaking with a good senator from Santa Rita, I would like to reconsider the actions of the body regarding the amendment by Tadegui and Perez on line 25, page 6 to 7, in regards to the self-haulers.
On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Senator Perez, you still have the floor now to proceed with the motion on the amendment.
So with the reconsidered amendment regarding on line 25, page 6 to 7, so I would like to amend this amendment.
This is the one that says, section 51A114, exemption, am I right?
Yes, that's correct.
Please read.
So the amendment, amendment to the amendment, well, if I can read it, should I read it, the original amendment first?
No, just read the amendment that you're going to do.
Okay, so I'm going to change the may to a shall. So it should read Guam Solid Waste Authority shall exempt from the requirements of 51A1003 of this article, any owner who shows, and only so long as the owner can continue to show, A, the owner of a residential building comprised of four units or less, or other qualifying building, may forego subscription, unless he is obligated by the lease contract to subscribe for garbage collection services; B, if the building with a valid occupancy permit is vacant; C, if the building is occupied but not expected to generate any form of municipal solid waste; D, if there is a contract for weekly collection services with a permitted private hauler, I'm sorry, permitted private collection hauler; and then E is the part that's being added, if the owner or less see of a residential building registers with Guam Solid Waste as a self-hauler and utilizes the residential transfer stations, any owner who meets the requirements of the section may petition the Guam Solid Waste for an exemption. The exemption eligibility shall be renewed annually from the date the initial exemption is granted. So, yeah, again, I think, I think the shall was important, because once you can prove this, I, it just makes sense that they will be granted these exemptions. So I ask for my colleague's support. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator, but I want to just add for the record, because I see the two ors there, under C, which is an or, and then under D, which is also an or underscore, that is still included.
Correct, yes. Thank you. Thank you for highlighting that.
On the, on the amendment, Senator Tadegui, I will recognize you at this time. Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand in support of this amendment. I think this amendment to my amendment, which is regarding the exemption, and just making but this gives an alternative, a workable alternative. And also, I think this ensures that trash doesn't, you know, trash doesn't get dumped illegally. I think we've offered, with this amendment, we've offered many compromises and also to ensure that the people who could haul their trash can do so and will not be turned away from GSWA. And I, once again, I thank the author. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator San Nicolas. Anyone else on the Perez amendment? If not, Senator Tom Fisher, you are recognized on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of this amendment. I'd like to echo what my friend, what my good friend Senator San Nicolas just said. You know, Madam Speaker, I'm sure you're aware that we frequently take breaks during the course of a session. We go into recess for, you know, we always say we'll recess for five minutes, and then we come back on an hour later. And that's just the way it is. And in the course of the time allotted to us to speak to one another, as Senator Duane San Nicolas said, we did work together. I just thought, you know, we were at loggerheads. And by giving us that time to talk to each other, we came up, we worked out a solution. And the beauty part of the solution is, this is another thing that I support Senator San Nicolas very much on. We both are very concerned about the fact that another person, a poor person or a person of limited means might get another bill for trash haul collections. And, you know, let's be honest, the difference between getting that bill and not getting that bill might be paying for somebody's insulin treatment, you know? And if, that is just a very unfortunate reality. And the fact that we, in this body, work together with a consciousness of our obligation to our fellow islanders and our obligation to the poor should, I appreciate very much that that is front of mind for so many of us. It's one of our, yeah, well, anyway. I commend the senators for keeping that in mind. So I do support the bill. And again, you know, I express my thanks to Senator Duane and Senator Sabina and Senator Tello for bringing these issues forward and allowing us to get to the point where we're going to have a resolution. And we're going to have a resolution that also protects the pocketbook of those of us who are not well-to-do, well-connected, and rich. So, thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much, and thank you to all my colleagues.
Thank you, Senator Fisher. On the amendment as proffered by Senator Perez and Senator Taidegui, anyone else wishing to speak? Senator Bloss, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, with all due respect, I thought that the motion was to reconsider the actions of the body on the vote. The vote, the amendment, was then to be reconsidered, and then from the reconsideration...
Senator Bloss, I'm going to quote this for the record. There was a motion to reconsider, and then an amendment was read on the motion, because I acknowledge Senator Perez. The amendment that is being proffered right now, unless anybody here wants to overrule the speaker, they may do so. But I'm entertaining the amendment, as I read and as Senator Perez read, from SFP slash TTT. And after discussion, because it was noted that after discussion with my colleague and senators that this amendment was going to be proffered. So I went ahead and accepted it. If you, again, you can overrule the presider by voting against me. So we are entertaining this amendment as proffered by Senator Perez and Senator Taidegui right here. So that's where we're at. And I can have you speak on the amendment right now.
I don't know how we can amend something that hasn't been considered by the body.
But the amendment was said. So you overrule the presider and redo and speak on the amendment as proffered by Senator Taidegui.
Ma'am, timeout and have the speaker. You speak to the clerk and to the legal counsel then.
I will, after speaking to legal, I will note that the amendment as proffered by the author of the bill was an amendment to the Tello-Taidegui, original amendment. So I will have Senator Taidegui close on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Again, Madam Speaker, it's not so it's going to derail it. It's just to make sure that it's proper.
I understand, Minority Leader. You are noted. Anyone else on the amendment? If not, Senator Taidegui, you may close on your amendment. I apologize. Hold on a second. I'm sorry. On the amendment as amended by Senator Perez to add the word shall, no, are there any objections? Hearing none? Motion carries. So on the amendment as amended, anyone else wishing to speak? If not, Senator Taidegui, you may close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you to my co-author of this amendment, making it stronger, ensuring that, you know, that this decision is not a maybe, but a shall, that GSWA shall ensure that these individuals are exempt, those who are continuing to use a transfer station, those who are continuing to be good citizens of this island and in the protection of our environment. So I really appreciate everyone to provide your support on something as important as this. I think many speakers before or spoke when the amendment was objected to, spoke after, made a lot of sense. And I ask that my colleagues take those words in consideration and please vote for this amendment. Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Taidegui. So on the amendment as amended, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Senator Perez, you still have the floor on your closing. I do apologize. Senator San Augustine, would you like to speak on the main amendment? I will allow you at this time.
You mean on the bill, ma'am?
On the main motion on the bill. Yes, sir.
I just have a question as I was watching on YouTube. And maybe the author of the bill can explain. You got an effective date upon enactment, and you also have upon approval and adoption of rules and regulation. Which one is it? What if the rules, maybe the author can explain that? And I'm, and she used to the question. Can we explain it better? Because if the rules and regulations ever comes in, then this bill is only as good as the papers written on, not any good for anything. I'm just concerned because six months from today, let's picture this, okay? Look at what we're at today. Election is coming up. If nothing really comes up, and it becomes 12 months out, and nothing comes in, so this bill is dead on the water. And if they have something, it would be nice if they can do a preliminary, let us know. So there is something moving. Because there's many times there's rules and regulations waiting for it, and it never comes. I'm just concerned because this is a great bill, but...
Thank you, Senator San Augustine. I will ask the author of the legislation to yield based on the inquiry. Would you like to yield, Senator Perez?
Yes, absolutely. And I think, I appreciate that question. And so this, I just want to let you know, Guam Solid Waste has until December to encumber these funds. These are ARPA funds. And so I believe there's a timeline. And so they are definitely incentivized to get the rules and regulations done as soon as possible. They're, I think they even have their own internal deadline to get these done. So I think that's what's important. I think, I will talk, I will have some amendments to just clarify this effective date. But, you know, I just want to let everyone know Guam Solid Waste is very, very, I guess, they're incentivized to make this program happen as quickly as possible, of course, with every, with the public's input. So I think they're looking to us to support their progress under such great, you know, leadership management team as well as a good board. You know, this board has been with Guam Solid Waste. The chairman, Andrew Gell, has been with Guam Solid Waste since the beginning of the receivership. And it's really, you know, I think it shows their commitment to get this Guam Solid Waste back on its feet. I mean, you know, I think they're looking to us for their support. So I appreciate the question.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator San Augustine, you have the floor still.
Okay, and still on that same question is after Illesa Tu and Guam's approval, correct? So it's got to come back. There's no recourse to make it be either you approve it or just something, there's got to be a connection to this. And we've done it before when on any bill that, if it doesn't get approved, then it's gone. Because it could be in 12 months, if we snooze, we lose. I'm just concerned about that because it's a good bill. It has good intention.
Thank you, Senator San Augustine. Anyone else? If not, thank you. Senator Perez, you may close on the bill.
So does Massey, Madam Speaker. So I do have several amendments to help clarify that. So I guess one of them would be lines 3 to 12, page 7. And so this one would delete Section 51A 1005 MOA with Department of Revenue and Taxation. This has to do with the garnishing of taxes. And I, the reason for this amendment is because, you know, we hear you. We hear that, you know, we don't want to provide any undue hardship. And we know that the tax refunds are important for our everyday people to help make ends meet. And so this is a response to any concerns regarding, you know, those that need financial assistance or need that extra help. And so I think this is an important amendment. Also, just to also add that other utilities, they use what's called a payment plan. And I think this is something that Guam Solid Waste can do that is compassionate and also accountable and responsible. So I ask for my colleague's support on this amendment. It's on line 3 to 12 on page 7. Again. Thank you.
On that amendment, are anyone wishing to speak? If not, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Senator Perez, you still have the floor. I think you have three more amendments.
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. The other amendments, basically, you have to deal with the, so the one about the effective date. So the way it's written, if you look at it, it can be interpreted that this, yeah, just to make it clear that we want to make sure upon passage that it's effective. And once it's passed and signed into law, then it would authorize Guam Solid Waste to then develop the rules and regs as soon as, well, it says here 180 days. So we're giving them 180 days. And so this just makes it clear that upon passage, then they are authorized to go forward with the rules and regulations, which is what is critical to getting this implemented. So it just adds more clarity. So I ask for my colleague's support.
On the amendment, Senator San Augustine? We're going to have a moment's recess. Yumina Chantashetinales Laturen Guam is back from recess. On the amendment as proffered by Senator Perez on the effective date, anyone else wishing to speak? If not, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Senator Perez, you have another amendment. You may proceed.
So does Massey, Madam Speaker. So the next amendment is implementation. So currently in the bill, it states nine months. So we felt that, I felt that a year's time would give enough, would give at least a more cushion to get this implemented. So what the amendment states is on line 12, page 8, to add a new Section 7 of the bill to read. Section 7, implementation. This act will be implemented 12 months after Illesa Laturen's Guam's approval and adoption of rules and regs, regulations are promulgated herein. So again, it's a stepwise approach. So the Guam Solid Waste has to produce their rules and regs, and then the next step would be the implementation phase. So that's just really to clarify again the bill. I ask for my colleague's support.
Thank you, Senator Perez. On the amendment as proffered by Senator Perez, anybody wishing to speak? If not, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Senator Perez, you still have one more amendment. Senator Perez, you still have one more amendment. Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So the next amendment is on line five, page six. And it's basically to, you know, clean up some residual language. This bill had, has gone through several versions, and this is important that we make this correction because the reference doesn't match. And so what this does, it basically deletes, or the customer assistance program pursuant to section 51A10 or four of this article, which is in a different section. It's not in the 51A11004. And then it goes on to add, so it states, I'll just read the whole thing. The subscribed owner shall pay for garbage collection services rendered to the occupied residential building. Nothing in this section is intended to prevent an arrangement or the continuance of an existing arrangement, under which payments for garbage collection services are made by the Lussi, Lussi's agent on behalf of the owner. However, any such arrangement shall not affect the owner's obligation to ensure subscription of garbage collection services and the associated payment for such services or for any customer assistance or lifeline rate programs created and operated by or managed by the authority. And so really, it's just to clean up the, the bill itself.
Thank you, Senator Perez. On the amendment as proffered by Senator Perez, anyone wishing to speak? Speaker Terlahey, you are recognized on the amendment.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask if the author would yield if this language is the language that was proposed by GWA to ensure that they had no liability in sharing, they're going to be sharing their customer data with GSWA to facilitate implementation of their program? And this is, this helps, I think, also Guam Water Works Authority, if the author will yield?
Thank you, Speaker. Senator Perez, can you yield to that question?
Yes, I do. And so actually, that, that section was to address the confidentiality of information is on section four of the bill. This one basically, this section is really to allow for any existing arrangements that currently exist, so to continue doing so. So, you know, as we're mandating a universal garbage collection, we don't want to interfere with whatever contracts are already in existence, or interfere with a customer assistance program or a lifeline rate. So it's really just to give that more flexibility. That's what the section does, that's what the section's about. But the, the amendment is really just to clean up the language, ensure the references are proper, appropriate.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Speaker, thank you very much. Anyone else on the amendment? If not, Senator Perez, would you like to close or call for the? Are there any objections? Senator Perez, I will allow you to close on this amendment. Are you okay? Are there any objections to this? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Senator Perez on the close.
So I would like to reconsider the actions of the body regarding Senator Tadegui and Senator Maya co-sponsorship of this amendment on line 11, page eight. It's basically making sure that there's no default approval by the legislature. So I ask for reconsideration of that amendment.
Does everybody have, still have their copy? There has been a motion for reconsideration for an amendment as proffered by Senator Tadegui and Senator Perez on page eight, line 11. Does everybody have their copy? On the reconsideration, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. On the proposed, I mean, on the amendment as proffered by Senator Tadegui, anyone else wishing to speak? Senator San Augustine, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I just asked the, the author of the amendment if they can please explain it. And I want to make sure it's in single, exactly what I said earlier. Okay? And I'll ask the author to please explain it so that we all get a full gist of it.
Thank you, Senator San Augustine. Senator Tadegui, would you like to yield to the question?
Absolutely, Madam Speaker.
Please proceed.
I'd like to thank my colleagues for the reconsideration of this amendment. As I proffered this amendment earlier, when we first came in, I explained that it was important that the rules and regulations, once they are promulgated and put in place, what usually happens through the AAA process, that it goes to the legislature for its vote or consideration. However, sometimes it never gets to, it never gets to the floor, it never has a public hearing, and it automatically becomes law within 90 days. That's already in the books. So what this amendment does, it does not allow it to be defaulted. You know, the good senator from GCO brought the concern up. And when he came here, and I was listening to him, I explained to him that this was an amendment that I proffered earlier, but it, it failed. There was an objection to it. But he hit the nail on the head. You know, he was spot on. This is exactly what is needed for this type of legislation to ensure that we have the ability to look at what GSWA has done to put in these rules and regulations and make any changes we feel that the community are voicing their concerns, who have grave concerns about. And this body can make those changes in those rules and regs. So it does not default automatically in, into law. It has to be approved by this body. So thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you to the, the question from our good senator from GCO.
Senator Joe, does that suffice?
Yes, it does. And I, I stand in support of that amendment.
Thank you. Anyone else on the main? Senator Barnett, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of the amendment and obviously the bill. And I think it's really great that, you know, the first 20 minutes of coming back in here today, I was scratching my head, I wanted to flip the table. But, you know, after some recesses, we're able to really hammer out the details of this, you know, very critical measure. And I know there was some trepidation, there was some doubt from some of the members about moving forward with a measure like this, considering that it is an election year. And I think it was maybe a little unfounded because some didn't want to move forward because they were scared of the impact should we pass this bill. But then the true impact will come if we don't pass the measure. And so I'm very encouraged by the spirit of cooperation with the members of the body. And that's all. Thank you. Sidoz Masi, Madam Speaker.
Buen pobeto, Senator Barnett. On the amendment, Senator Duane San Nicholas, you are recognized at this time. Please proceed.
No, I'm not going to object this time. But I do want to say that, you know, I'm not doing this because it's an election year. I'm doing this because, you know, I serve at the behest of the people who put me here. And a great majority of them may suffer if this bill is not done properly. So I thank all the recesses we got, and so we could hammer it out with Senator Sabina. We're all laughing back here. We're all trying to get it all, make it, you know, ma- make it so that we're, we're making it all palatable. We're trying to make sure trash gets to the right place and not, not in our, our backwoods. And make it so that it's, it's not, it's not too burdensome on our people. And that's why I'm doing this. I don't really care if I get reelected or not, and you can quote me on that. But it's not because if it's an election year or not. We're really, what we're really trying to do here is trying to make sure that this is fair and just and equitable. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome, Senator San Nicholas. Senator Tom Fisher, you are recognized on the main, on the amendment.
Thank you, ma'am. Just very briefly, I actually rise to associate myself with Senator San Nicholas's remarks. I have never heard anybody in this body express the fact that they would not do the job they promised to do because of an impending election. I, I just have not heard that accusation or position bandied, or bandied about by anyone here. Again, I just want to associate myself with my friend Senator San Nicholas's remarks. Thank you.
You're very welcome. On the amendment, anyone else wishing to speak? If not, Speaker Terlahey, you are recognized on the main amendment.
Thank you. And I want to thank the profferer of this amendment. It's actually a very good amendment, and not only this one, but the other amendments actually are excellent. They're technical, they're, some of them are at GSWA's request, which has been in response to consumers. So I think they make the bill much better, and all of our bills could be made better with, with our cooperation. And, and while the bill, I believe in its goals, it's not been proven yet, of course, so we can say it's not going to work. And it may not be the perfect solution, depending on the implementation. But I believe it is the only solution that has been put on our table by both the executive branch, its agencies, and the legislature. And so I'm looking forward to, if it, if it improves, you know, prevention of illegal dumping in any way, then I think it's a great bill. And I think the side effects of reducing fees for current customers is an excellent side effect of the bill, due to the hard work of GSWA and, and the sponsor of the bill. So I just wanted to say sidoz masi to the sponsor and to the sponsor of the amendments, who we can tell did their homework and really get put in some good amendments. Sidoz masi.
Buen pobeto, Speaker Terlahey. On the amendment, if no one else wishes to speak, Senator Tadegui, would you like to close?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And again, I thank my colleagues for understanding the importance of this amendment from the time I first introduced it. So I'm glad that everybody had a chance to look this over and reassess it and the importance about. Thank you.
Thank you. On the amendment, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Senator Perez on the closing.
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. So I do want to bring up one other correction that needs to be made. It's the numbering. So previously in this body, we passed the Ordo Dump Reserve, and that was supposed to assist with the Guam Solid Waste Authority to help prevent the doubling of rates because of, you know, that money was going to go towards the, the closure, right? That was so critical to ensure that money is directed to post-closure efforts, which would then prevent the doubling of rates. And so the numbering for that one would, is already used. And so if I can make a note for legal, legal to make the proper numbering. So I know right now it says to add article 10, but perhaps it should be a new article 11 to this chapter 51A.
On the motion to allow legal to make the necessary changes, here, are there any objections? Hearing none? Motion carries. Senator Perez, you still have the floor.
All right. I just want to thank my colleague, the good colleague from Ipana for that, for that suggestion. So, yeah, so in regards to closing, I just want to really thank all my colleagues for this collaborative effort to, to work together and to make good policy. And I really truly believe the island-wide garbage collection is an important policy for our island to ensure that waste is disposed of properly, because everyone pretty much produces waste. And it's really our responsibility to ensure that it is properly disposed and in a safe way. And so with this amended bill, it's important to note that island-wide collection is not limiting our residents to just Guam Solid Waste curbside collection. It would now accommodate self haulers who have this incentive to produce less waste and therefore spend, you know, the cost of, of disposing of trash is done properly. So I'm really glad for my colleagues to support this amendment and, and to also come up with this amendment, as well as Guam Solid Waste supporting this too as well. So this bill is all about island-wide collection, whether it's with Guam Solid Waste, whether it's the individual who prefers to go to the self, to self haul it, as many of our community members, people in our community do. And so I think we need to recognize and support those efforts for those that take the initiative to properly dispose of their waste at a low cost. And so we want to ensure that this low-cost option is available for all people in our community. It also recognizes commercial hauling. So for those families that prefer to share a bin and, you know, haul it commercially, that option is available. But the bottom line is that Bill 165 promotes responsible disposable, disposal of garbage with many options. Bill 165 also provides exemptions for those in which our dwelling, in which dwelling units are vacant, or is not expected to generate any form of municipal solid waste, or has proof of weekly private collection. For those in financial need, it is Guam Solid Waste's objective to provide lower monthly rates to those who qualify. And they mentioned it would be most likely tied to SNAP benefits. The passage of Bill 165, an increase of customers is expected to lower rates for, for curbside collections, collections in the coming months. Additionally, it is my intention to seek additional subsidies for low-income customers and those families who need support financially for island-wide collections. We as a body, in addition to seeking good policies that promote collective responsibility to care for our island, must also be committed to providing the safety nets for those in need. This is what Guam Solid Waste is committed to. In addition to ensuring our environment and the health of our people are taken care of. By passing Bill 165-37, it supports the values of Anafat Maalik, of respect to. It promotes a Guam in which we call home, that is, retains its beauty and its environmental health. I ask the support and invite my colleagues to take this important step to acknowledging these time-tested values and to find ways to continually, continually support the autonomy of Guam Solid Waste and a very important utility for our island. Sidoz masi.
On the motion, Senator? To place it in the voting file, please.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. On the motion to place Bill 165-37 as amended and further amended on the floor into the third reading file, I wish to make that motion.
On the motion to place Bill 165-37 COR into the voting file, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Colleagues, we will be in recess till tomorrow. Senator, Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Tonight at, it doesn't, oh. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. There's a reminder from our colleague, our good colleague Senator Fisher, that, that tonight at sundown begins the Jewish holiday of Passover, seven days of Passover. And I would like to make a motion at this time to recess until 9:30 tomorrow.
On that motion, without any objections, we will be in recess till 9:30 tomorrow morning. Sidoz mbi ni di si am do tores. We are in recess.